Call me in order and ask Captain Watson to leave this place, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Poole?
Here.
Councilman Cotton? Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Here.
Councilman Barton?
Here.
Mayor Lovelace?
Here.
There is a forum, we are open for business.
Next time, if this is approved, we'll ask meeting again.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Barton. Any comments? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, minutes are approved.
I'd like to welcome our visitors that we have today. I see a few new faces, and I'm certainly glad you all are joining us today. Approval of the agenda.
Agenda's up on the wall for the audience, and the council has a copy. Any additions or deletions? All in favor of the agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, agenda's approved as presented.
Under old business, we have none that are noted. Under new business, Steve, you're house is gonna present discussion on workforce development.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. When Mayor Lovelace came into office, he came with the desire to focus upon economic development. Now, there are many building blocks to economic development, one of which is called workforce development. Workforce development is developing the skill sets and the level of knowledge and competency in your workforce so that they'll be capable of doing the jobs that are given in a certain area. Retail businesses look for that, as well as industry. Whenever they're coming to a prospective area, they need to be able to have skilled workforce to be able to do the jobs that are there. So, in looking at that emphasis, he asked me to look more into workforce development, kinda put together a plan as what the city of Bruton could do to be a player in that arena. So, with that task, I embarked on the project. I consulted several individuals who were key figures in workforce development, and after several interviews with them, I compiled my information, and I break it down into five sections. First of all, I looked at a section called "The Structure of Workforce Development." It starts with the governor's office, and it goes all the way down to dividing the state of Alabama into ten regions, and city of Bruton is in the number nine region, Region Number Nine, Southwest Alabama Workforce Development Council. And I had more details with that, but it's a state project to start with, and it works through our educational institutions, and then you have on the other side, industry. So, you have workforce development with the state, and you have industry, and somehow or another, that bridge has to be built to facilitate communication between the two in order for effective workforce development to be going on in a region. Following an establishment of the structure of this, I did a subject survey, and I talked with several key individuals. I went to the Career Readiness Center over on P Ridge Road. I talked to Al Bennett with workforce development on the JDCC campus down in Atmore, went to the Ed Reed Institution in Evergreen and talked with those folk. Talked with Jim Cersei, Director, Executive Director of Coastal Gateway. Talked to Lynn Smith, our local school superintendent, and then part additional research and investigation. Learned about a program that's in Baldwin County where computers have been placed into possession and hands of every student down there, and they've totally modified, totally redone their school curriculum down there so that when anybody's going through school, they're gonna be learning the basics, but they're also gonna be put on a career readiness track so when they finish school, they are career-ready, they are skill-set to go do a job. From that, I looked at certain stumbling blocks in our area where workforce development is concerned, and following that, I brought together some summary findings or some conclusions that I was able to draw from my research, and then I put together what is a prospective preliminary plan for how the city of Bruton can be involved in workforce development. I have learned that there are many scholarships that are available where career readiness or trade schools is concerned, sometimes ironically, there are not enough applicants to take up all the scholarships, and that word needs to be gotten out, it needs to be communicated. From the folk I've talked with, I already had this hunch, but in talking with all the professionals in the field that I talked to, they agreed with me, and it confirmed and validated that my hunch was stronger than a hunch, and it needed to be a new philosophy, that the future prospects for employment for folk are brighter and better in a technical trade skill kind of vocation than going and getting a four-year degree. Now, four-year degrees still have their places, don't get me wrong, but the prospects of employment are brighter for folk who will go get a technical trade skill education and then follow it through with a job in that field. So, I want you to know that it's an emphasis that the mayor has stressed, something we're looking into and that we wanna be actively vigilant concerning, because if nothing else, there needs to be dialogue, communication, visibility on this subject, because I did learn in from my research of the subject, that you've got the government doing its thing, and industry over here, but in our area, there's very little, if any, dialogue between the two, and that is a critical failure. And if nothing else, if we can push it, promote it, emphasize it, stress it, have folk talking about it, we will be doing more than what has been being done. If it's okay if I approach, I'd like to give you all a copy of the report that I turned into the mayor. Does that fill in the gaps of what I did back to you in the report that I gave? Any questions?
Can I have a question?
I'll get you one.
I think you can tell from this report that, you know, to try to help our citizens be workforce-ready, have the necessary skill sets to work in the day-to-day economy to get jobs is the utmost important for the city of Bruton and for our citizens. Steve's done a really good job working on this report. I meet once a month with the head of the Bruton City Schools, the head of the county schools, Dr. Bain from Jefferson Davis, and Dr. Rosemary Watkins from Alabama State Southern Normal. The next step in this is, he'll be presenting this report to them and working with Coastal Gateway on their level to try to implement some of the steps that you see in here. So, that's what this report was for, because, you know, we hear so much, it's a real buzzword today in where you look about workforce development, this, workforce development, that, and different agencies, and we're trying to pull it together that makes sense for the citizens of Bruton. So, we'll be hearing a lot more about this on a go-forward basis. Appreciate you, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm up to bat for the next one, so I'll stay here.
And then he's still up for a nuisance ordinance.
We have many nuisance properties in the city of Bruton, and we're working on cleaning things up. That kind of progress cannot go nearly as quickly as we'd all like for it to, but under the advice of our city attorney, he has recommended and suggested that where the owner of property is, as defined in our Code of Ordinances, that we add a phrase in there that would also qualify the owner of property as being the holder of a tax certificate for a certain property. We have a lot of nuisance properties in Bruton, and people have bought them on a tax sale, and they don't wanna do anything to them, just hold them and see if they can sell them or if they can get their, make money on it or whatever, but they're nuisance in appearance, they're dilapidated. So, by putting that phrase in that definition, that owner is also considered to be somebody who has property obtained through a tax sale, that gives us strengthened leverage in being able to deal with them and hold their feet to the fire to bring a building up to code that's out of code. So, we have that ordinance right there asking that you support that and amend that definition in the Code of Ordinances and give us just a little bit more strength in our enforcement.
Make a motion to approve 13-0325.
No, sir. It'll be first to introduce.
Okay.
You make a motion to introduce?
I make a motion to introduce it, Steve.
Second.
Thank you.
Have a motion by Councilman Barton, seconded by Councilman Watson to introduce any discussion. Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Okay, you now?
Now, I make a motion to approve?
No, immediately consider. You have to immediately consider.
Mr. Barton, you're quick on the gun, I like that, that's good, sir. We'll get you one more.
We're gonna get it through, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
You gonna make that motion?
Go ahead.
I make a motion to immediate consideration, orders number 13-0325.
Have a motion by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Little to immediately consider any discussion. Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Mayor Lovelace?
Yes.
Okay, it is unanimous, now?
Now. I make a motion to approve ordinance 13-0325.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Barton, seconded by Councilman Watson, any discussion to approve. Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes, sir.
Motion passes and ordinance will be published.
Thank you all very much.
As you know, the Alabama League is having their convention, May 18th through 21st this year in Montgomery, and they happen to be having an annual business session to be held at 3:45 that Monday afternoon, May 20th. We, as a city of our population, have one delegate we can appoint to go ahead and vote and/or listen to everything going at that business meeting. I recommend Mayor Lovelace be appointed.
I'll make motion, second.
Have a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by?
Second.
Councilman Watson to appoint Mayor Lovelace, any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, and Mayor Lovelace is the appointed delegate.
Question, John, don't we always have an alternate for that also, in case he is incapacitated and can't make it?
There was no alternate on the floor.
Does anyone know this one?
Next is a proclamation in support of the National Park Trust. As I said, we've been discussing, and that's just a copy of the proclamation that we'll be signing.
Right, there is no vote required, it's something we're supporting, the Trust for National Kits to Parks Day on May 18th. We're urging the citizens to take their children to any park, any outdoor activity on that day in support of the parks.
Yeah, Park Day, you know, we're broadened children, appreciation for nature and that.
And the Park Trust is in Rockville, Maryland, that's where this document will go, Rockville, Maryland?
Next is approval of the opposition bills, House Bill 257 and Senate Bill 217. This is Resilience 13-03-25.
Right, the short version of what you're seeing on the wall there is, the legislature wants to limit what business licenses cities can issue to people who have rental properties. Some cities issue licenses on people for individual units, they wanna limit it to a flat fee. The city of Bruton does not do that, all we do is issue real estate licenses, but any introduction of legislation like this could lead to limiting how we could charge fees for business licenses in the future. That's why this opposition resolution is presented.
Are there any thing there that shows that we shouldn't approve this bill or?
Like I said, the city of Bruton is not affected, because we have a separate real estate fee, we don't charge by rental.
Do you want to approve this or?
This was a request from the League in this town, person opposed.
We would go to oppose.
To approve this.
I make a motion to disapprove of this.
Okay. Have a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Littles to approve the resolution, any discussion?
John, you may have mentioned something about the fees, there was a fee involved. What is that fee?
We don't, we don't charge it. The difference would be me issuing a rent or a license for the number of units he has, 200 units, or just saying 200 a year flat rate, whether it's 100 units or 1,000 units. They wanna limit it to the flat rate, and not able to, you know, get per-unit fees for the licenses.
So, you don't know what the fee is?
Well, no, we would issue a fee, if you guys allowed me to do a fee on rental units, we have to come up with a fee schedule at that point. We don't have one, all we have is the real estate fee, which is a flat rate, by the way. Further discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, resolution will be signed.
I come before the council, Mr. Residence on Northeast Street, they would like to rename Northeast Street in honor of Reverend Dr. H.J. H.
HK.
Yes, HK, yes, H.J. Lancaster, J. Lancaster. The reason they wanna do it is recognition of him and all he did for their community in that area. We talk E-911, there's no problem getting the street name, we're coming for council, as a council party mission.
Right, E-911 has approved it, and this is the resolution that was written to support it.
If all of the necessary procedures have been followed, I make a motion that we approve this request from Councilman Watson. Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Little, seconded by Councilman Cotton, any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, and I'll notify the post office.
If you recall, in the past, we had gotten a grant from the Health Department for lighting for the Front Row Creek Park. The grant was for $20,000. The project has to be completed by June the 1st in order to receive the funds, and this is the bid calculation on those bids that we got.
Based on the data that we reviewed, this is the resolution supporting the award to Coastal Lighting Solutions in Mobile.
John, I'll put that slide back up, I need to draw it.
Sure.
Okay, I see, I'll look at it, I see, there was no installation above the clue, okay. That's why I'm gonna see, I just see when you.
It's okay.
The grant from the Health Department covers that entire cost?
No. Twenty thousand. Twenty thousand.
Our motion, it will be approved, resolution number 13-0325-2.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Barton, any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Littles?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes, and we'll award the project.
John, once the award, I guess we have like about 15, 20 days before they get started on it, something like that?
We'll have to write up a contract and get them going on it, because...
Now, we'll have a...
Now. Brought to you by Hall and Oates Cereal, here's the sewer presentation. Let me take you back to 2008, I'm sure Ray remembers this. A bond was produced to go ahead and support sewer projects, and most of it was aimed at being matching funds for CDBG projects. Now, that was all fine and well, and went on for a while, but as the years went on, it was a interest-only bond. So, as you can see there, we were going on interest-only payments, and right where you see in my handwriting there, you can see in 2015, the principal's gonna jump in there. So, we're gonna go from 229, 535 a year to jump up to 694, 535 a year. So, knowing this, and knowing that within two-plus years, sewer can't support this, what is the best way to overcome it and yet give Ray some more funds to continue his projects? Because what everyone doesn't realize is that Belleville project, which went over its cost and went over another fiscal year, ate up a lot of that fund. So, Ray has some, let's call them non-critical projects, for which we're looking at the state revolving fund, which comes through a DECOM, and this is a breakout of the way we see it. And I'm not gonna read it to you, but you can see in bullet three, these are the three non-critical, let's say, projects, and they're all targeted at pumps and pump systems. Now, the problem is, we won't get the actual rate until this thing is written, and you'll see on bullet two that we won't even see the money till spring of 2014, when it comes in. Now, the good thing is repayment isn't started until the work is completed, and there may be some forgiveness on the principal, as you see in the next to the last bullet, we're approximating the payment as we sit here today at less than $38,000 a year. That's over the 20-year life of the note. I'll let you take a look at that for a second.
You know, so everybody understands that forgiveness has always been part of this, but because of the way the federal government right now, and the problems that they're having, they can't be assured of the funds and exactly what, how much the funds are. So, if there'll be forgiveness in this, we won't know until Congress gets there after that.
So, this is all fine and well, but what about the immediate needs? That's great for '14 and '15, what do we do now? We've been in discussion, looking at the possibility of a general obligation refunding sewer warrant. Thirty-year note, which would also pay off the 2005 issue and push that high-dollar amount owed in '15 out several more years. Principal and interest would be paid together, still giving capital funds to Ray for some projects, along with some CDBG grant monies, and we're looking at approximate payback of around $612,000 after 2015. Now, you may very well ask, how are we gonna do that? Sewer Disposal Debt Service Fund is something that the sales tax feeds, it's a debt service-only restricted account. We'll be able to pledge $200,000 or more a year, but we're also gonna recommend to the council at some point, these approximate sewer rate interests, or sewer rates be increased incrementally as shown. And it says 2013, we're not clear on the exact start date on it, because this is another ordinance item. So, this is all well and good, but what are we paying now? Current sewer rate is $9 minimum, with 75 cents on additional $1,000, so I'll let you take a look at that while you look at the numbers. So, the basic increase is $6 to the basic rate, and of course, everyone using those into the 1,000 gallons would be jumped from 75 cents to the rate you see after the hash mark. So, the next logical question, okay, what is everybody else around here paying? This is an analysis of what some of the cities around us, and it's not written in the same format as my other slide, but for example, Andalusia, their flat rate is 9.60, and then per 1,000 gallons, you can see it jumps to $1.40. The only reason there's two columns saying the same things is that Flometon and Monroeville don't have the flat rates, and some don't have the per 1,000 gallons, so to avoid confusion, there's four columns. As an example, Flometon has a flat rate of $20.30, but there's no per 1,000 gallon fee charged, as an example. So, looking at the rates that we showed you on the previous slide, we don't feel, in the appointed side, that the $15 basic charge is not reachable. Now, obviously, that's gonna be the council's decision at some point, but we feel that's enough to keep sewer alive and pay for these issues, we need to continue the improvements over the next 10 to 20 years. I'll leave the floor open to Ray if he wants to add anything, or you can ask any question you want at this time.
I have a question for Mr. Madden, you probably can answer this for me. When's the last time that Bruton, we're looking at all the rates in the surrounding area around us, what their rates are, when's the last time that Bruton raised their sewer rate?
2005.
2005, it's 10th, 18th?
At the time, 2005, it was $6 minimum, and each sentence $1,000 back in 2005. We raised it on 69 and 7,000, I didn't speak since, 7,000, a thousand. And at the time, we were actually, the first $300 a gallon was given to them free. We changed that when we did bond issuance in 2005.
John, if we did nothing on anything, that bond has come and do with the increase of the property value of $1,000 a year. Sewer department doesn't have anyone to handle that increase.
Not to cover, not to cover that kind of principal coming in, no.
And this gonna happen no matter what we do.
Right now, we actually, we're bringing this on about $320,000, $340,000 a year on sewer funds that's been, been filled out now. That's relative where we at right now, and there's no way we can operate, or there's no way that we can maintain at them rates.